Six o'clock and we're going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everybody would please stand and do the pledge allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or contemplation.
Mayor Pro Tem Mathy.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Okay, so obviously, the mayor could not be here tonight, so I am stepping in and going to run the show as Mayor Pro Tem this evening. Just so everybody knows too, we're going to do all our voting tonight as voice votes, and we'll make this work as well as we go along. Do we have any recognitions and appointments tonight?
We do not.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. I know we have a few people in the room that are registered to speak, so I'll read this little thing from the mayor here. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should remain, maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Madam Clerk, would you call our first speaker, please?
First up, we have Seve Day.
Yeah, just step up to the podium. Is the microphone on?
Hello, yes. Hold on a second. Hello, I come before you on behalf of my family. My name is Seve Day, brother of Jelani Day, and also older brother of my siblings. Me and Jelani are two years, four months, and 30 days apart in age. By the time Jelani finished high school, he was taller than me and my older brother, DeAndre, and he told, and he had the confidence that could motivate you on your worst day, whether it was school, whether it was music, whether it was sports, or even food. We competed and strived to be better than one another. He was smart, he was passionate, he is my little brother. We have had over 100 days, including a Christmas, a New Year, and two siblings' birthdays, passed without any clarity, sense of understanding, compassion, or help. Still to this day, that we are getting, we are getting told that I don't know, I'm not sure, and we have to see. From elected and well-paid, self-proclaimed professional departments and agencies, according to the journal, according to the Journal of Family Psychology, it says, and I quote, "The death of a child is traumatic, is in a traumatic event that can have long-term effects on the lives of parents." This study examined bereaved parents of deceased children and comparison parents within similar backgrounds between the ages of 53. Bereaved parents reported more depressed symptoms, poor well-being, and more health problems, and were more likely to have experience of depressive episodes and marital disruption than were comparison, in comparison to being parents. Recovery from grief was associated with having a sense of life purpose and having an additional child, but was unrelated to causes of death or amount of time since the death. The results point to the need of defection and introvert, I'm sorry, intervention to help those parents who are experienced lasting grief," end quote. My father, age 51, and mother is also around the same age. Speaking for my father, who doesn't have the strength to come to these events due to various reasons, stated in the article read above, and the fact that he is recovering from heart transplant till this day, and also battling leukemia. His health due to unanswered questions and also loss of my brother has taken a toll on him and a toll on my mother, as you all have been seeing on the news. We are here today to call out the lackluster and piss-poor behavior and disrespect we have experienced during this time. More specifically, Illinois' Attorney Kwame Raul, also LaSalle County Sheriff Adam Dis, Peru Police Department Bob Pesquet, Illinois' Governor JB Prisker, Illinois State Police Director Brendan Kelly, LaSalle County Police Department Chief Mike Smoduski, and also Bloomington Police Department Chief Simmington. We believe and we also have faith in that you guys' time is up, and we want the FBI to take over the case and this hate crime against my brother so my family don't have to go through another holiday, birthday, week, month, day without closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Olivia Butts. Olivia, if you can press star six to unmute yourself. And next up, and then after that, it will be Matthew Tosker.
Thank you. I wanted to just say, first of all, I do support the Day family and their fight for justice, and I hope that you all seriously consider their, their concerns with specifically the Bloomington Police Department, as obviously that that's what you have jurisdiction over. Tonight, I am here to comment in regards to the agenda item, the Flock cameras to be purchased by the Bloomington Police Department. There are a variety of concerns, I guess I have, around the use of automatic license plate reader technology, but my main concern tonight is the lack of discussion about this new technology. I think most folks would agree that if the Bloomington community is to undergo more surveillance, then there should be some sort of public town hall or public input. At the very least, some discussion amongst council people about how this will affect policing and how this will affect the community. Some questions that came to mind right away for me were, what are the goals of these cameras? Where will these cameras be placed? How does VPD plan to use the data? Can the city council review the data to see if outcomes were achieved in maybe six months or a year? And then, how is the Bloomington Technology Commission involved? And is there any way to get that commission involved in what this data will look like or even some of the decisions being made by the Bloomington Police Department? These are just a few questions that I'm sure the public has regarding this new surveillance. I look forward to more discussion and opening this conversation to residents and Bloomington stakeholders so that we can all have a say in the community policing that happens in Bloomington. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Olivia. Did you say Matthew was next?
That is correct.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Matt. I'm calling in today to give my two cents on the Bloomington Police Department's request to purchase the Flock system automatic license plate reader cameras. First off, how dare you try to sneak this by as a consent agenda item with zero public discussion or debate and no real chance for the people of Bloomington to say no to it? This kind of public surveillance bullshit is exactly the kind of thing that demands transparent discourse and a democratic process before implementation in a purportedly free society, if it's implemented at all. I for one am 100% against extending police surveillance state in any way, shape, or form. If this patriarchy wrecking kind of shit is even okayed by we, the people, we, the people should not only know exactly where it will be, who will have access to the info it gathers, and the exact parameters of how it will be used, we should have a direct hand and clear rules surrounding it. I call on this village to remove this from the consent agenda. If it is to be done, I demand that it be done right after discussion and debate with an opportunity to turn it down altogether with the ultimate control of it being democratically controlled by the people of Bloom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Next up, we have Carmen Bolden Day, and then to follow, Carol Kuss.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Bolden Day. I'm here to speak about my son, Jelani Day. Jelani was a God-fearing, educated, promising, and respectable young black man. He was my baby, he is my son. He moved to Bloomington because this was the area that he was supposed, that was supposed to help him further his education. He planned to use his time in Bloomington to continue to use his voice and intellect to help those who had difficulty using their own in the community around them, around him. Jelani was a true example of what the purest form of humanity, not to mention the image of black excellence. I want you for one moment to consider my shoes, put yourself in my place, consider my sleepless nights, the nightmares, the agony of not knowing the horrors of your child's final hours, my endless tears, the continual fight to seek and secure answers when there is silence all around me. How would you accept learning updates about your loved one's case via Facebook and social media networks? How would you feel if you had to wait weeks before being told or communicated of any updates? Would you sit back and do nothing? Would you let your son's death be made a mockery? Do this for me, each one of you. Replace your child's name or your loved one's name with my son's name and consider the daily heartbreak that I have to be subjected to. I don't know why my family has to endure this emotionally draining nightmare. I constantly ask God for guidance because I often do not know where to do or where to go, but I stay in the fight because I, I, just like you, if this was your child, you will feel that there was significance to his life and he was worth it. I would directly like to address you, Jamie Verbrugge, and I apologize if I'm saying your name incorrectly. Having been the city manager since 2015, it is plainly written that your job responsibility is to recommend actions to the council to protect Bloomington citizens and provide efficient operation of, of the government. No. I'm sorry. This is for you, Jamie. It is plainly written that your job responsibility is to recommend actions to the council to protect Bloomington citizens and provide efficient operation of government. Know that what we are dealing with has everything to do with the safety and protection of this community. Know that efficient operation of the government by the way of Bloomington Police Department is in question because of the way that my son's case has been handled. Know that this isn't just about justice because the justice would be that Jelani is still here. This is about, this has everything to do with accountability. Not only accountability for those not doing their jobs, but accountability for those whom enabled this behavior. I ask you today, have you enabled the lack of accountability, Jamie? Have you looked into this case yourself? What questions have you raised to the Bloomington Police Department? What accountability meetings have you set up? Do you know the details of the case? Have you asked questions about what is being done? Your actions or inactions are being noticed. The Bloomington compute, community is behind me and my family. They are watching and listening to everything you say and do, and when it's time for reelections, they will remember, I'm asking them to remember, how you chose to respond. Mayor Moboka, you ran your campaign on the promise forging better relationships between the community and the city and the police. You lead the city. Do any of you really want another disappearance and death happening on your watch? If you haven't understood yet, this is a severe crisis that requires a swift and thorough and transparent action. I am deeply disheartened that this is not the kind of action my son has received from you or the Bloomington Police Department. The Bloomington Police Department's mission is to work in a partnership with the community members of Bloomington to enforce the laws and to enhance the quality of life in this community. Since Jelani was a part of this community, his disappearance, the, and involving his disappearance, this police department has not worked in a partnership with the community or the immediate family of Jelani Day. The Bloomington Police Chief Jamal Simmington has contacted me only two times. The last time he made contact with me was October 13th of 2021. That is not someone that is showing me that I am important, that Jelani's life was important, that this case has been important. I remain confident that somebody knows something, somebody's seen something, and that those somebodies will be held accountable for the death of Jelani Day. Beyond Hello released a statement on January 7th stating that the Bloomington Police Department has all video coverage of Jelani Day. To the, to this date, that video coverage has not been shared with myself nor my family. Have you inquired why this footage has not been shared? Have you asked to see it? Remember, what would you do if this was your child? You will without question demand for footage to be released. Why has this not happened for me or my family? What is, what is your response to this lack of communication and transparency? I have lost trust in the Bloomington Police Department for these and so many more reasons. Because of this, it is time for the newly, for the newly formed task force to take my son's disappearance and death seriously. Bloomington Police Department was the lead police department in my son's death, and they have tried to remove themselves from this case. That is unacceptable. Trust can only be restored by the police when they allow the FBI to come in and take over this investigation, and they serve as assistance to the FBI. My question is, have you been in the fight to make this happen? If so, how do I know? What does your advocacy look like? What have your actions been? Have they been swift, thorough, and transparent during this citywide crisis? When this is all said and done and accountability is had, will you, the Bloomington Police Department, the mayor of Bloomington, the city mayor of Bloomington, and these council members here, will your stand be on the right side of history? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
We do. Next up will be Carol Kuss, and then to follow, Edward Brightweiser.
Carol, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Okay, right. The Central Illinois Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union of Illinois requests removal of item 7G from the consent agenda pertaining to Flock Safety Contract for the deployment of automatic license plate readers within Bloomington. Primarily, more information needs to be shared with the community before this agreement is considered for approval. Communication with citizens prior to approval will increase sense of trust in the police and city government. Counter to terms under 7G, discussion with, with the community needs to happen before and not after cameras are purchased and installed with particular interest in the camera's impact on public safety and right to privacy concerns. Police need to inform community of their goal with the use of this technology. Police need to provide evidence of crime reduction efficacy and type of crime impacted by this technology. Since the Public Safety and Community Relations Board did not meet in January, delay of consideration for approval will also allow the police to meet as planned with PSCRB at their scheduled meeting in February instead. If council does not vote tonight to move ahead, we urge you to consider the following conditions. One, the police department must develop and share publicly a specific privacy policy regulating the use of ALPRs. Such a policy should detail who can access the system, how long data will be stored, who has access to store data, what the punishment would be for violating the privacy policy. Two, Bloomington police should publicly share where, where ALPR technology is being utilized and how decisions about deployment are made. The backup materials for this proposal suggest that placement will be in high-crime areas and locations that have frequent traffic accidents. This general language should not be a formula to monitor the everyday activities of black and brown communities by building an electronic moat around these neighborhoods. Three, the city council must insist on an annual report by, on the efficacy and operation of the ALPR system. We urge the city council to insist on a 12-month contract with a yearly audit and public report that includes, A, the operating cost of the system, B, a reporting on extent and how has it contributed to diminishing violent crime. If the system does not demonstrate significant crime reduction, the contract should sunset. C, the outcome of the disciplinary policy for infractions of police, ALPR policy. D, report on other purposes for which the police department use license plate data. Last of all, the, the Bloomington Police Department should not share data collected by ALPRs with any other law enforcement agency, which does not abide by a privacy policy that, that does not align with a Bloomington policy. Thank you very much. This is Carol Kuss, President of the local ACLU Illinois Chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Edward Brightweiser, and then last to follow will be Janay Janay.
Okay, Edward, star six will unmute you.
Can you hear me? Perfect, thank you. My name is Edward Brightweiser. I'm a resident of Ward 4 and also serve as a transportation commissioner in the city of Bloomington. I'm here today to echo the concerns of many in this room about the proposed contract with Flock Safety Consent, Consent Agenda Item 7G. Briefly, I believe that this consent agenda item is rushing into a contract that could directly impact public safety and privacy without debate. Independent studies from the Municipal Technical Advisory Services, Electronic Frontier Foundation, and reporting from several national journalists and nonprofit organizations have failed to demonstrate that automatic license plate readers, ALPRs, including Flock Safety Systems specifically, increase community safety. Several communities, in fact, regret their decision to deploy these systems, finding that increased surveillance has brought more harm than good. I stand with the ACLU, NAACP, and many of our neighbors in Champaign-Urbana, who agree that police departments need to clarify the use of ALPR data and strengthen privacy practices to prevent privacy abuses by police departments in California, Vermont, and other communities. ALPRs cannot create, excuse me, ALPRs cannot be used to create, quote, "tech moats" around communities, where police departments need to disclose the planned locations for ALPR systems. Police need to audit the efficacy of ALPRs and share these results with the public, and data should not be exchanged across entities that will abuse it. In summary, I believe that we're rushing into a multi-year contract that will cost taxpayers more than $50,000 with no trial period or public transparency. Until Bloomington residents can be assured that Flock Safety or any other ALPR provider will improve our community instead of selling us fear, I ask that this topic be removed from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And Janay was the last one?
That's correct.
Janay, star six, if you can hear us, and that'll unmute you.
Hello?
We can hear you again.
Sorry, I can't hear anything.
Janay, can you hear us at all?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. I was just calling to also voice my concern about the consent agenda and the cameras without any public input, but I think that pretty much all of the people that have already called in have said what needed to be said about that. And, excuse me, after hearing Jelani Day's mother speak, I would encourage all of the council members, including the mayor, to listen to that again and make finding justice for Jelani Day a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Janay. Okay, so that was the end of public comment. Next, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Are there any items that city council members might want to pull from the consent agenda? I see. 7G, mayor? Councilmember Crable would like to pull 7G. Is there anybody else? I'm trying to see everybody on camera here. Okay, not seeing anybody, anything else from anyone else. Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7G.
Okay. Councilmember Bowlin motioned to approve it, and I heard Councilmember Crable second at first. I think we're going to do voice votes for everything?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Oh, he's not voting. You are not voting, sorry.
Okay, then not yes.
Only in a tight. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, that one carries unanimously. Councilmember Crable, 7G.
Thank you, mayor. A person who knows all of another's travels can deduce whether he is weak, a weekly churchgoer, a heavy drinker, a regular at the gym, an unfaithful husband, an outpatient receiving medical treatment, an associate of a particular individual or political group, and not just such fact about a person, but all such facts, and that's from the U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals. The International Association Chiefs of Police have said about these, these cameras in general, the risk is that individuals will become more cautious in their exercise of their protected rights of expression, protest, association, and political participation because they consider themselves under constant surveillance, and I'll correct that, they, they talked about surveillance in general, not about the cameras. These cameras specifically will capture thousands of license plates on a daily basis, and only less than a percent, looking at what other communities and these cameras have done, less than 1%, will result in a, in a hit that may solve a crime. So that's why I believe that we need a strong written policy in place before we approve this. I want to thank the chief for sending an email earlier today, answering some of the questions I have, and I would, I would ask that you share this info publicly so the public and stakeholders like the ACLU and NAACP and Black Lives Matter can respond as we have, as we have been able to do internally. Your email discusses public input after the cameras are approved but not before. Well, I appreciate your responses, we've not had sufficient community input. We know this has been a controversial issue in other areas such as Urbana, and I believe these other communities have also had a fulsome discussion. I even understand that a representative flock even attended one of the community meetings. I guess I ask why the rush? We applied for the grant in 2020, we received the grant in the spring of 2021. We had all the time last year to have public discussions, receive input from the PSCRB, the Tech Commission, community stakeholders, time to have written, to drafted a written policy about many of the things that were addressed in your email. The police have, sorry, thank you, thank you, sorry. Police have, have 100 standard operating procedures in writing. Police have a hundred standard operating procedures in writing, and this needs to be one. I agree with the chief that we have an obligation, that both the council and the police department have an obligation to leverage technology to protect our residents. But we also have a responsibility and to the community to protect their privacy. And so I would ask that this matter be tabled. I'm going to say till the end of February. But I'm certainly open to another timeframe if other council members support tabling this matter. Thank you.
Okay, so you're motioning that you would like to see this table until the last meeting in February?
The last regular meeting in February. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second to that, yes. I'll second it.
Okay, second from Councilmember Ward. Any other discussion? Okay, I see. Councilmember Ward, would you like to say anything else? I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, I, you know, as a general rule, I've heard from, from several of my constituents that they have some support for. For surveillance cameras. I myself personally have, have experienced gunfire from my property a year and a half ago. At a neighbor. And I was asked by the police immediately after, are there any surveillance cameras? And I think that, that having surveillance cameras might have changed the outcome of that neighbor moving. Which was an unfortunate thing. I, I have mixed feelings, and I think that there's time for us to have more discussion about this. And that's why I'm supporting pulling this from the consent agenda and asking for it to be tabled. Again, I have, I have mixed feelings and, and so I think we need to have more discussion.
Thank you. Next, I see Councilmember Boland.
Yeah. If it's being tabled for a time certain, I'm not sure it needs to be tabled that far out. In relation to Jelani Day's investigation. The police chief specifically said that with the cameras. There would have been a possibility that more information could have been collected, and I tend to agree. I also had a personal interaction with the woman that lived in the house on Roosevelt Road. Or Roosevelt Street near Holy Trinity, whose house was riddled with bullets. And she too, she was sleeping with her children in that home. Bullets went into the wall. And her major concern was, was there a record? Was there pictures of this person that did that? So I do think there's a value as a tool for the police department. And, you know, questions can be answered by the police chief at the P S C R B as an open forum. And the very following meeting, which would be the 24th. I think that we can put this item on the regular agenda and discuss it at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Councilmember Montney.
Hi, thank you. It was really tough to listen to the Day family speak tonight. And to hear his brother ask questions that the answers to were, I don't know. And this type of technology, which as I understand it, is specifically character reader technology. Looking at license plates as opposed to anything that involves facial recognition, et cetera. Could help solve crimes that we can't solve today. The time that we wait, we risk other things happening. We risk crimes that could be solved that we can't because we don't have this technology in place. Despite knowing that it is available and that we could have it. And the cost is relatively insignificant, about a third of an F T E annually. When I think about these last few months. There's another example in Illinois on another campus where a graduate student was murdered. And the surveillance video identified the perpetrator and they were able to arrest him. Protecting our people is our primary duty as local government since the beginning of time. And if we have the opportunity to protect our people. By having current technology that many of our neighboring communities are using. And it is used in the private sector that is used by homeowners associations. I think we should allow our police department to have this tool at their disposal.
Thank you. Next, I see Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I just want to say that I support tabling this as well. You know, I support the use of new technology tools for the improvement of policing in the city. And I think ultimately I'm likely to support, you know, the use of these cameras. However, I also really believe in the integrity of process. And it, it seems to me, you know, as a representative of Ward Nine. You know, I just have simply not had the time, you know, to reach out to my constituents, you know, to determine, you know, their perspective on this use of city funds. I know people, you know, in this ward value safety, but I certainly don't assume that I know how, how everyone thinks or their perspectives on this important issue. And so I would like to have some time to do that. I also think, you know, prior to placing cameras, as others have indicated this evening. In communities, those communities ought to have an opportunity, you know, to weigh in. I think that kind of thing builds trust with communities, which is what I know the Bloomington Police Department strongly believes in. Agreeing with Councilmember Boland, I don't have to have until the end of February necessarily. But I would like some more time, you know, to, to be more informed before we make this important decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Thank you. I too support tabling this. I have received an huge amount of feedback from constituents as well as other members of the community. Just to take time to look at the entire context for, for approving this. I do appreciate Chief Simington's earlier communication to all of us. And I think that it sounds as if Bloomington will go above and beyond. Should we adopt this technology to purge records after a certain period of time? That don't have any matches in the system. And to make the information, the data collected available on the dashboard. And, and have accountability back to city council in terms of its efficacy and how, how it's working. I was very moved by Jelani Day's family and their testimony today. And what, what I did hear a lot of from them was an effort to collaborate, to work together. To, to seek solutions and, and try to find out how we can, we can make our community better together. And I think that even if we table this until the next voting session or the first voting session in February. I would be fine with either option that it provides that opportunity to have this collaboration. And, and for questions to be answered that are very legitimate about, about what the impact of this technology will have on the community. Thank you.
Mayor, I have, whoever, whenever everybody else has done. Okay. Councilmember Becker?
I'll be quick. You know, to be honest, I understand the concerns that folks have voiced. When I saw the item on the agenda, I was ecstatic. Because since I started walking this ward campaigning back around the first of the last year. People have been asking for cameras. I don't know if everyone's familiar with Ward Five, but the area behind the bowling alley or the abandoned bowling alley. The people in that neighborhood beg for cameras and have been asking for it. Along Hershey Avenue, people have been begging for this. And, you know, just listening to them say, we need this help to protect our neighborhoods and to make us safe. I was very, very excited for it. I agree with prior comments where with the total. I have no words to express how the, the Day family must feel in their loss. But I agree that cameras could have helped them if they were around more. Now, we're not talking about cameras everywhere. We're talking about 10 cameras to start, right? But I do think cameras could really have helped that situation if it happens to be in the right place. So I was not for tabling this. If we do end up voting to table it, which it appears that's going to happen, I would say table it as short of a period of it as possible. So that we can get information out and make a decision to keep our community safer. Thank you.
Councilmember Crable, before I come back to you, Deputy City Manager Tyus?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, we do appreciate the input, and it does look as though there will be a move to table tonight, which we completely understand. One of the things that I did want to share, just so that the public is aware. And some of this was included in the email that we did send. We're talking about the installation of 10 readers placed throughout the community. I know that there was conversation about not wanting to place them in any one particular area. Well, that's not what this is. These cameras are to be placed throughout the community, and we will gladly share those locations. Everything I wanted to share was that there will be limitations on data storage. And in terms of the, the, the policy or practice for how we use them. They're not to be used for traffic stops or other, other, I don't want to call them smaller crimes, but they'd be used for, for major crimes. Things like missing persons, things like homicides and shootings and robberies and assaults, et cetera, et cetera. So I, we have that information. We will gladly share it during this period, or we can share it tonight if you so choose. But wanted the public to know that at the end of the day, we believe that these cameras are going to be a vital tool for solving crimes throughout the community. Not just in, in not targeted to any one area, first of all. But secondarily, we've seen successes through their use in other cases. Where we've used camera data to literally get the information that we needed to solve a crime. We have partnered with other communities using the plate readers to solve crimes as well. So just want the public to know that. Again, if it is the council's direction to table things, we completely understand, and we will react accordingly. But the other thing I wanted to share, if you don't mind, Mayor, is that Chief Simington is on the call as well. If there's anything else that he would want to add to this conversation, we would welcome that.
Chief, if you've got anything you want to say real quick?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Certainly, I, I appreciate the time. As the Bloomington Police Department, we have taken a slow, methodical opportunity to evaluate. The use of license plate readers in our community. Professionalism and diligence in the process has been a part of that. Other communities have been out in front of it and have installed and entered into agreements. We have communicated with them extensively. From their chiefs of police to others that have been involved. In standing up this technology in their communities, and the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. We have gauged our decision to pursue this opportunity based on, on all of that. So I do want to credit my team for, for being diligent. This is a force multiplier. This technology will save tremendous time in, in what investigators use to comb through. The existing video technology that the department uses. We currently have 18 public safety camera units that are deployed throughout the city. To add to that are other video footage that's provided by businesses and or residents. At times, we're, we're combing through that video numerous days, several hours, hundreds of man hours sometimes for specific cases. When this technology is, is very efficient and effective. And we will use it accordingly. There will be a policy developed. We are looking at best practices throughout the nation and pulling those best practices to put those into a policy. We will be the first, if granted the opportunity, to purchase these to have. In Illinois, we'd be the second agency to have a dashboard that will display what uses. That technology has provided for us. And that will also be accompanied with supervisory oversight. Not every police officer will have access. Only specific detectives and supervisors. And then we will audit and provide reports back on an annual basis to ensure that we are being very transparent in its use. And do so effectively and legally. Thank you for the opportunity to present and speak with you today.
Okay, thank you, Chief Simington. Coming back to you, Councilmember Crable?
Thank you. Just looking at what kind of committee meetings we have coming up. I believe the P S R B meets next, the first Thursday of the month. So I believe that would be February 3rd. I also think it'd be good for the Tech Commission to look at, and they meet the fourth Thursday of the month. So I would propose the first meeting in February. That will have, be an opportunity for both of those committees to have met by then. So it would be February 14th.
Change your motion to table until our first regular council meeting in February. Which, pulling up a calendar.
The 14th.
The 14th?
Yeah.
Okay. Molly, I think you were the second. Are you okay with changing that motion?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Boland, I see your hand up.
Yeah, the, the P S C R B meeting from this month was canceled. And it's actually being rescheduled for the 20th of this month. And that's why I suggested that it come back to the 24th for a regular meeting on the 24th as a regular agenda. So I would like to, I would like to amend the motion to bring it to the 24th rather than the first.
So I don't think that you can amend the motion that's on the table. I think that if the motion fails, you could propose, make a new motion. Is that correct, Jeff? Okay, so just real quick thought from me before we go ahead and vote. So I'm probably the nerdiest guy on the city council right now. And that being said, as I will say that I do not have a Alexa, an Echo, a Google Play, a Ring Doorbell. I have none of those things installed at my house at all. Because I frankly don't trust any company to, with my data that I can with, you know, hold back as much as I possibly can. So, you know, I have, much like Councilmember Ward said, I have very mixed feelings on this. Because we, we do have a duty to the public at the same time to protect people. And so this is a, this is a difficult one for me. You know, just, I, I have mixed thoughts too. I will say that the Technology Commission has been working on privacy policies. For many of the things that the city does around, because as we move forward with it as a city. We are going to keep using technology, more and more technology as we go forward to make operations as streamlined as possible and keep costs down. And so the privacy policies and the use of data policies around everything that we do are going to continue to be important. So, you know, Jeff, I do appreciate you saying that we do have a Tech Commission meeting at the end of the month. And so I, I think this will be a topic at that, at that meeting as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the, our city clerk to take the vote. With the vote, motion on the table is to table this until the first meeting in February.
Yes. Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
No.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. I think we have two nays to announce.
That is correct. Councilmember Montney and Councilmember Becker.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Great conversation there. I always appreciate that, that we can actually disagree and still have good conversation about that. So thank you. Next up, we actually go all the way down to City Manager. Next up, we actually go all the way down to city managers' discussion. Deputy City Manager Tyus?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Phil, thank you, Phil. I also want to clarify one thing before I get started. I got a reminder that the, the, actually, the PSRB's meeting will not be held in January. The next meeting is actually going to be held on the first meeting in February, first Thursday in February. Yeah, so just FYI that that is the case. But we're still obviously covered as it relates to this. Secondarily, we have a couple of slides to discuss tonight. The indoor farmers market is going to be held January 22nd of this year from 9:00 a.m. to noon at, at the arena. We've obviously seen even through the pandemic that that event has been very successful in our community. We continue to get a lot of comments about the event, both the outdoor events that we had during the spring and summer, and also the indoor events that we've had, we're having as well. Next slide, please, Phil. The Tour de Chocolat, and I struggle with that word, so bear with me, is being held February 4th, 22nd from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in downtown Bloomington. And again, it's just another in a long list of events that Melissa Hahn and her team are, and the downtown merchants, obviously, are, are continuing to have in the downtown. I don't know if he's spent a lot of time there here recently, but it's an active place. And it's, 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 we're excited about some of the things that are happening there and going to be happening. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, so next up is mayor's discussion, and the mayor is not here. I'm going to take this advantage and just say that, you know, like I think other people have expressed, my heart goes out to the Day family. I cannot imagine what they're going through right now. I know that I've been asked many questions, and unfortunately, as members of the city council, there's things like this that we're not allowed to comment on with the ongoing active investigations. So, you know, I, I think it's a priority for the members of the city council to keep pushing forward and hopefully find out all the details and, 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 and make this a solved thing. And so the family gets resolution in terms of what happened. But there's just, there's some pretty serious limitations of what we can and cannot say as council members. And so, you know, we, we definitely do want to see resolution to this, and we want it to be as soon as possible. But we, we, we can't say a lot on that. Other than that, the other thing I would mention to everybody is please stay safe. Obviously, COVID has not gone away. It's gotten worse. It's back with a vengeance right now. So back to the basics that we all learned in kindergarten, right, is, you know, cover your face when you cough and, and wash your hands a lot. Stay safe, stay socially distanced when you possibly can. And if you feel like you've got the symptoms, you know, make sure that you're, you're protecting those around you. You know, Kelly and I both were diagnosed positive with COVID a week ago, and it was, or more like two weeks ago now. And it was not a fun time. And so it is in our community. I know many people have been positive right now. Just be as safe as you possibly can. With that, I will go to council member discussion. Is there anybody that wanted to, had anything they wanted to bring up tonight? I see Alderman Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my heart reaches out to the Day family as well. I appreciate them coming to, to speak. And, and as much as, you know, our, our police department, Chief Simington can communicate with the family, and that doesn't necessarily mean disclosing information that they don't, he doesn't think should be disclosed, but just saying, hey, we don't have any new information, or we do have information, but it's best for the investigation if we don't share it. You know, those types of things, I think, can go a long way. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see any hands raised right now, so. Oh, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, I was just going to ask that I be able to call out the public comment that we received by email before the end of the meeting.
Oh, sure. We'll go ahead and do it right now.
Thank you. We received two, one from Odisha Hinkle and one from Chris Barnhill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nothing else from the members of council, do, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's amazing how fast that happens every time. All right, do we need to do a voice vote, or just everybody holler, or what, what do you want to do there?
I'll do a roll call. Thanks. Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
And with that, we are adjourned and, and waiting for the mayor's professional running of a meeting when he is able to next attempt. Thank you, everybody.
You did a good job, Jamie.